...delegations for this evening, and another delegation wants an extension. Do we deal with that in the adopting the agenda items, or just after?
You can deal with it after you've varied the agenda to include it, just after.
Yes, so I want to vary the agenda to include a discussion regarding late delegation, and another delegation request, delegate request for the evening meeting. So with that added, I would ask for a motion.
So what kind of added items, and why are you adding them?
We're adding it to, it'll be just after the adoption of the agenda, and I'm just adding it because we have a request from one delegate I'd like to discuss. It's regarding an extension and another late delegate for the evening, and we'd like to approve that in the afternoon so that delegate could be advised. So with that addition to the agenda...
Are you asking for the approval of these?
No, just to add them to the agenda so we can discuss that. That's right. Okay, so Counselor Fox moves, seconder. Counselor Arneson, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Second item though, would be, when I just added, there's a late delegation, Mr. Bert Hicks for the evening meeting, and delegate, let's just get the name here, Annabelle Young, who is on the evening agenda, would wish to move her delegation to March the 5th, and is also asking for an extension of time of 10 minutes. Our policy basically allows five minutes per delegate, and I think if we were to ask her if she was to bring another person to assist her, that they could put in two delegations, and we could accommodate, so. Sure, sure. Counsel, so there's a list here, or maybe this is an old list, I don't know. I'm gonna clear it, and who wanted to speak? Okay, Counselor Fox, then Davis, then Long. Okay, thanks. Counselor Fox on...
Well, if we don't allow it, this is a violation of our freedom of speech, so I think we have to allow it.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough, so. We need a motion first of all, but I'll just go through the quick list so we can move on with this. Counselor Davis?
Is, this is what she's asked for with this. Can she do that without having this on a real official?
Oh yeah, it's a correspondence.
I guess that's okay.
It's a correspondence to us.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, thank you.
She already has a delegation request in, so.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Long?
Okay, so we're dealing with the extension of the time?
We're dealing with two, it's not even a motion on the floor yet, I'm just, if anybody had any discussion. Basically, it's to approve, so I need a motion to approve Bert Hicks for the evening, and also Annabelle Young has requested 10 minutes, which is a variance from our procedural bylaw. So one thing we could do is we could grant it, another thing we could do is we could just say, bring another person, and you have two delegations, which is what most people do.
Yeah, I have an issue with that, because that's a bit of a loophole, but I mean, we don't, you know, we may as well put a sign up, everyone come, bring the whole family, right? So I would be against extending it, but on the first one, this Mr. Hicks is coming to speak about the same issue that this other gentleman's coming in the afternoon. Why don't they both come in the afternoon, or will they purposely want to split up into evening and afternoon?
Yeah, I think their item is on the evening agenda.
They're both for the evening, your worship.
They're both for the evening, yeah, their items are on the evening agenda, so that's why, yeah.
Oh, I see. Your worship, just to simplify things procedurally, let's start with Mr. Hicks.
Sure.
Technically, as he's on, for, as he's speaking to a matter that's on the agenda, he would ordinarily be approved, but because it's a late delegation, it's always helpful to actually resolve that counsel is going to receive his delegation.
Because there may be some discussion on both sides, we just move two motions, so entertain a motion that we approve Mr. Hicks for the evening.
So moved.
Counselor Long, seconder, second? Counselor Arneson? No, it's, we just need to have a motion, so I'm just gonna clear the queue again. Anybody wish to speak to the motion on Mr. Hicks? And Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just wondering, we, Mr. Hicks has spoken to us before on this topic. We've also had a letter recently, again. So are we aware that this is new information, something new, or is this a repeat of what we've already heard?
Your worship, the only information we have is contained in the delegation form itself, so we're not certain what their motivation is, and that is a good point to exercise a bit of caution. We will have a rather robust agenda this evening because of the public hearing, so counsel may wish to be expeditious in dealing with the delegations on their matter, because it is a lot of information you've heard before.
So, in, previously, he delegated to ask us, to ask, I guess, any member of council to put forward a reconsideration motion. That's being done. He's now speaking to that reconsideration motion, I suppose, but just based on this, it's my assumption, so.
Yeah, it seems like he spoke to it already, and we're not aware of any new information, and so, and we have a letter, so I just feel it's, I think we should deny this request at this time, otherwise they can just keep coming back all the time to keep saying the same thing over and over again.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, Speaker, Counselor Long?
Oh, your worship, we heard, we don't know what he's gonna present, so I don't know if that's valid.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion? I'm gonna call the question on Mr. Hicks. And what do I label this, A2? Okay. Anna Carries, Counselor Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counselor Qualley opposed. And the next, I need a motion to deal with Annabelle Young.
Your worship, just to assist counsel, the motion would be to refer her to the March 5th meeting, and advise that it is a limit of five minutes per delegation. If there's additional delegates, they could so apply.
If there's additional delegates, they could apply. Okay, could somebody move that? Let me just give that, okay, Counselor Davis, seconder, second? Counselor Arneson, okay, discussion. Counselor Richter?
I'm a little confused by her email that she sent today. Is she wanting to speak tonight for 10 minutes, or is she wanting to put it off to March the 5th for 10 minutes?
We understand she seeks to have it adjourned or postponed to March the 5th, and during that time be given 10 minutes for her delegation.
Okay. Now, I'm perfectly in agreement with giving her the 10 minutes. Usually, the SRES has some pretty good detail information when they come and speak to us. I'm wondering, though, can we ensure that if we do pass this, and she does have a colleague from SRES that will join her on the podium so they can have the 10 minutes, can we guarantee that those two delegations will be back to back, so that they can have their 10 minutes?
We can do that by agenda, that's no problem. We can do that during the agenda, or direction to staff to make the agenda so, that's not a problem. Counselor Long?
Well, your worship, I think we either grant her the 10 minutes, or we don't. I don't really like this idea of saying, hey, there's a way around it by bringing a friend, so is the, if the motion is to grant the 10 minutes, I would prefer to see that to be voted on, your worship. So I'll make an amendment that we just grant her 10 minutes, because she's with the SRES. I think it's gonna be better for down the road, otherwise we'll get them all the time.
Okay, that's been moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Richter, on the amendment, I think it's six, one half dozen the other have no problem with it, so. Counselor Fox?
I just wonder why we have rules? Why we have policies, and why we have rules? I mean, every time an exception comes up, we just grant it anyway, so why don't we just have a free-for-all and have everybody just have, you know, go? Now we're into 10-minute delegations, and we're into late delegations, and it really matters little. So I would, you know, suggest we relook at the policy, throw the policy out the door, and just move on, and let people come and have an open discussion every meeting. It seems that it doesn't matter what our policy is.
Either way, if the amendment passes, it will go to the motion as amended. If it fails, it will go to the motion, and either way, they're gonna get 10 minutes, so. Counselor Qualley?
Couldn't this just get relabeled as a presentation, rather than a delegation, and then they'd have 10 minutes? So if we asked, if they just relabeled it as a presentation instead of delegation from Salmon River, would that not work?
The presentations are usually requested by counsel, directly or indirectly, so if the desire of counsel is to invite them for a presentation, then counsel could do so.
So I think that would still enable us to keep the rules the way they are, because I do agree with Counselor Fox, that we need to uphold our policies around delegations. And so, yeah, I mean, I would, I would suggest we invite them for their 10-minute presentation.
Okay, if all of this fails, then we'll consider a motion to invite them. I think either way, they're gonna get here. Counselor Richter?
I think it's very reasonable requests that they're making here, and I don't mind giving them presentation time, because they could speak even a little longer than 10 minutes if they wanted to. But, you know, this slavish adherence to rules doesn't allow for situations where there are genuine reasons to vary the rules, and I think this is one of those situations where there is a genuine reason to vary the rule. It's not an unreasonable request.
Thank you, Counselor Long?
Worship, this is my point entirely, there are rules, and I think the only way the rule can be amended is a vote of counsel. You can't just bend the rules or bring a couple of other people with you. So that's what this motion's all about, but we're gonna amend it because counsel wishes to entertain the idea of taking 10 minutes.
Thank you. I'm just gonna call the question, but before I do that, I'll ask Ms. Bauer, does this require two-thirds to vary the, because we're going, the amendment is asking for 10-minute delegation, and it's a variance of our procedural bylaw. Is that required, two-thirds?
As it's not on the current agenda before counsel, I don't believe it does.
Fair enough. Thank you. Call the question on, still A1? A2, okay.
Can you just say exactly what the word was?
So this is amendment, just to give, just to give the delegate 10 minutes. That's what this amendment is saying, is to delegate that we'll get 10 minutes, okay? So I'll call the question. Amendment carries, Counselor Qualley opposed. Motion as amended. There's still a speaker's list here, Counselor Qualley?
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Counselor Fox, motion as amended? You're on the speaker's list? No, okay. I'll call the question on A2. Carries, Counselor Qualley opposed. Move on to the regular afternoon council meeting minutes, February the 5th. Could I have a motion?
Moved.
Counselor Fox, second. Second, or Counselor Davis, any errors or missions? All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed and carried, thank you. Motion resolved and to special close for the items on the agenda and on table. Counselor Davis, and, okay, but just push your button then.
I'll second it.
Second, or Counselor Fox, just push your button then, Counselor Arneson. Counselor Long?
Yeah, I have the two property items, your worship.
Property times two? Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh, I'll get to you then.
Intergov?
Intergov. Thank you. Intergovernmental. Counselor Fox?
One intergov and one legal?
And Counselor Arneson?
Legal.
Legal, okay. Okay, with that, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you, and we'll move into closed. All right, good afternoon, and I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council back to order and reconvene it. And the next item on the agenda, delegations, and we have Ms. Leanne Cassip from the Insurance Corporation of British Columbia here to provide us with some information, and I see you brought some friends along. You brought your entire entourage bodyguard, I see. So I'll let you come forward. Welcome here.
We're pleased to be here to acknowledge the partnerships with the Township of Langley and the Lower Mainland District Integrated Road Safety Unit on the strong commitment and support to distracted driving. Approximately 875 crashes happen every single day in our province. Many of these are caused by distracted driving. Twice a year, in March and September, ICBC and the police across the province unite in one of the largest-ever enforcement efforts targeting distracted driving. Despite tougher penalties and more education about the risks, distracted driving is responsible for more than a quarter of crashes, crash fatalities in B.C., with an average of 78 people killed every year. Insurance rates are under considerable pressure, in part from a significant increase in crashes, many of which are a result of distracted driving. ICBC supports and works with municipalities, community groups, business associations, and volunteers to reduce the frequency and severity of crashes, as well as prevent incidents of auto crime. We recognize, however, that this work cannot be done alone, and we would like to thank the Township of Langley and the Integrated, Lower Mainland District Integrated Road Safety Unit for its ongoing support and commitment to the Provincial Distracted Driving Campaign.
Yeah, good afternoon. The Township of Langley has participated with us on a variety of distracted driving initiatives, the first one being Operation Hang Up, where we have a number of signage out on different areas and corridors within the township and the city as well, and to bring the attention of people basically like, please get off your phones and stay off your phones while driving. It involves a combination of signage, our cell watch volunteers, and of course, our police enforcement. Using our not-well-driving decal images, lawn signs were created to be placed along high-risk corridors for a short period of time, rotating around the community throughout the day to give the impression that the distracted driving enforcement is actually happening everywhere. In some cases, cell watch volunteers will be set up down the road with additional signs, and police are always set up with enforcement, sometimes covertly, but other times in plain sight. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Paul Cordero from the Township, who was very instrumental in allowing us to have the opportunity to place these signs.
Last fall, with the assistance of Roland Zweig, the Township's Director of Public Works, ICBC and officers from the Lower Mainland District Integrated Road Safety Unit had the opportunity to educate over 200 fleet employees in parks, utilities, roads, and construction services. The presentation covered what distracted driving means to you, we gave the definition, why it's a problem, B.C.'s mobile device law, ICBC's road safety education, and tips for drivers. And the feedback that we received was that these sessions were good, they were well-received, the rules were explained clearly, a comprehensive understanding of the distracted driving laws and what not to do was provided. Staff were engaged and asked good questions, and they said to us that they look forward to next year's initiative. In addition, further education included posters and lawn signs at the operations center. And in the community, there's a picture of one of our volunteers, it's Langley RCP, one of their volunteers, with our distracted driving simulator. So we have a few of these that we rotate throughout the province, and we take to community events, and it's a really great tool, and it gets the point across, so. And actually, the Township of Langley, we utilize this at some of the NAOs events.
Without our community volunteers, it would be very difficult to do these initiatives. We're proud to support community cell watch groups, which are operated by community policing volunteers, educational program in the end, reducing distracted driving in B.C., our partnerships with police, volunteers, and members of our road safety team, designed to remind drivers that it's illegal and dangerous to use cell phones and other portable electronic devices when driving. Modeled on the speed watch program, community policing volunteers set up in high-crash corridors with signs reminding the drivers to avoid distracted driving themselves with their phones. They make note of how many distracted drivings they observe, and the nature of the distraction. There's 40 groups provincially, and to date, last year, we had 130,000 vehicles checked, which is pretty, pretty exciting to have, be able to have our people do that and actually see. Distracted driving, you may or may not know, is our second leading cause of fatalities, just barely behind speeding, and just ahead of impaired driving. We, our media as well, I'd like to just shout out to the, both local newspapers in Langley, the Langley Advance, and of course, the Langley Times, which are very instrumental in having our, our local police being observed, handing out violation tickets for distracted driving, and of course, our volunteers out reminding people to stay off their phones. So for, for tips, basically, how can we all help? We can all be part of the solution and not hopefully the problem. I think everybody in this room is, we're the, we're the ones that we can continue to do the messaging out there. Place calls before you drive, pull out of traffic, check in, get into a parking lot where you can safely retrieve messages and return calls. If you can't leave your phone alone while driving, turn it off, put it in the trunk of your car to avoid the temptation. Let your passenger make those texts or receive calls for you. Bottom line, it can wait. There's no caller text so important that it's worth risking your life. Let's go to, let calls go to voicemail, ignore your text messages while driving.
We would like to congratulate the Township of Langley and the Lower Mainland District Integrated Road Safety Unit on its leadership, and personally thank both organizations for taking in the initiative to promote road safety within the Township of Langley. As a token of our appreciation, ICBC would like to present these plaques to display to both employees and members of the community, showing the commitment you've made to combat distracted driving. Thank you very much. May we have a photo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
I would love to present.
And thank you for all the work that you do. I know it's important work, and that you, you do all this public education, and all the volunteers definitely, big shout out and thank you to them too, so thank you.
Can't do it alone, so thank you.
Oh, we have a question from Counselor Davis, so you're not gonna give away for too easy.
Well, not maybe just a question, I, do you always travel with this many police? Because I, when you came in the room, I kind of, I kind of got a little leery.
We usually try to get them in red tunic, but, you know, it's a stretch.
And anyhow, we, I, I've been through a couple of the signs, and it's very effective. And we just had a report from Chief Campbell today about when the red, when the fire trucks go out, and they're, this, in 2017, we had just over 1,000 just car crashes, and he'd commented about if everyone put two hands on the wheel and just focused, it would, they wouldn't be such a resource, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Want a big group?
Somebody get a big group?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We're... That's wrong, you're balancing yourself. It's gonna fall off.
I have a new job. Smile. Thank you. I'll send it to the mayor's office, and they can forward it.
Much appreciated, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Appreciate that. F1 is Agricultural Land Commission Application Number 100336, Harvest Baptist Church. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, seconder. Counselor Qualley, discussion on this? I'm just gonna clear it. Counselor Arneson, just push the button again. There, I just wanted to clear the queue, if you could do it again. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Arneson?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, I'm wondering and looking at this, whether or not it's our jurisdiction to be able to put at this point a condition, along with the application, to preclude sometime in the future from an expansion of the building footprint that they're going to put here. Is that something that we can add as a note to the Agricultural Land Commission, or is that something solely that they get to decide at some future date if there was a subsequent request for any expansion of the building infrastructure?
I know we have a bylaw on coverage on property that is in existence, but Mr. Backen, oh, one more thing before we go on, just to ensure that the, that the motion was, as Counselor Fox wished, because the recommendations that we consider, is it, would the recommendation be that we forward? Mr. Backen, forward this on to?
Depends, your worship. It could be endorsed, it could be supported, it could be forwarded, depends upon what the mover's intention was.
Okay, Counselor Fox, what was your intention? As is written, or to approve?
As is written.
Okay.
Your worship, as is written contains a note to consider. That was the council could determine if they were going to say that they were supporting or that they were not endorsing or not supporting, so we have to pause it.
We have to have what?
Support and forward.
Thank you.
Support and forward.
Thank you, I just wanted to get that clarification. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Arneson, I'll let you continue, Mr. Backen, I think was going to answer your question.
So, your worship, the, the property, I think, would be complying with our zoning bylaws and our setbacks. It might be difficult for us to impose a condition at our end. We could add a rider, I suppose, that we request that the, that the Agricultural Land Commission, I'm trying to think of some wording, Land Commission minimize any further footprint expansion, or something along those terms.
Can I make that as a condition, then, at this time?
That condition would be to request that the Land Commission...
Okay.
So you want to add that on as amendment?
Yes, please.
And is there a seconder to that amendment?
You know, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, yeah. Hang on, I'll have to push, open that, now I think it'll push the button for discussion. I had to, okay, Counselor Long?
Well, I mean, the question would be, surely they would have to apply again for expansion, would they not?
Right.
So it's up to the things at that time and date, should it happen, right? So this is, this is, I guess, you know, preventing anything from happening in the future, but we don't even know what, what may or may not happen, it may be different council, whatever. So if I understand correct, your worship, then that would have to come back to council regardless. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, yeah. Any, any further building on this property, you'd have to come to council, forward to the Agricultural Land Commission, if the legislation continues to stay as it is today.
And then we should probably just, just wait until that happens, if it does at all.
Thank you. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, any, any council in head, any future council can't be fettered by any decision a council made at this point in time, so really, the condition is a moot point in the context of a future council. It can completely disregard it, though, so when the next application comes.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you. While I appreciate those comments, and that may be true, I think that it should be up to the individual council that is looking at this, to try and make a determination as to whether, at a snapshot in time, we think that this is appropriate, but maybe would like to constrain any future consideration. It's a note, it's not binding on the Agricultural Land Commission, but it does, to me, make an important statement, that while we may be agreeable to what they already determined would be fair in 2011, we would not, as a council, like to see potentially, you know, some other usage, a much expanded usage in the next whatever.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I tend to agree with Counselor Long on this one, I think we'd leave that, and Counselor Fox, leave it to future councils, so I can't support the amendment, although I do understand the intent. Thank you, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment to F1. And amendment fails with Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Davis, Counselor Long opposed. We're back to the main motion, and I know there's some lights popped up at the maven for the other thing. Counselor Davis, did you wish to speak to the main motion?
No, I'm okay.
Counselor Long, did you wish to speak?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the main motion? Call the question. And that's F1. And carries unanimously. Move on to F2, the proposed expansion of the Fraser Sewage Area, and that's the 3300 block of 262 Street. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis, seconder. Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion on F2. Counselor Davis?
I've never seen one of these before, and I don't think I have, if I can remember. Is this normal, like, wouldn't they want to do a block at a time, or now, you know, every little piece will have an application? Is that, I guess, yeah, I just haven't seen one before.
Mr. Seffy will, I think he can help clarify that. Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, there have been many, well, not many, there have been other examples of this kind of a situation arising in the past. We have suggested to Metro Vancouver that they may wish to do a holistic alignment of their, their various tools, but so far, they have not done that, resulting in the need for site-specific applications to go forward.
Okay, and all the, all the, the owner has to pay for all the costs?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, I just noticed in the report that there was zoning, which is residential, but the designation is for industrial. So for clarification, is there any difference between the sewage infrastructure for either of these uses, or are they the same?
Mr. Seffy?
Typically, industrial areas require larger diameter pipes. Typically, industrial areas require larger diameter pipes, Your Worship, for both sewer and water. In this case, without the, the benefit of knowing ultimately what kind of a use will go in there, it is, it is difficult for me to, to find out what the size is going to be because of the lack of design. Having said that, if, in fact, it's approved by the GVRD, sorry, GVS NDD board, the proponents will have to do a proper analysis to come up with appropriate design pipes.
Okay, thank you. I just thought it was prudent, since there was that alternative use, that if they were required to meet a standard, they might have to, they should maybe meet the higher standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I just had a question with regards to the size of this parcel. Do we know what the size of it is?
Mr. Seffy?
Your Worship, it's actually shown on the screen right now, so I'm just going to take a look at the staff report.
Five acres, or?
About 200 meters by 200 meters, 40,000 square meters, guessing.
I'll have to look into it, Your Worship, and get back to Counselor Richter.
Okay, well, the question that I have is, the report says it is staff's understanding that the property owner intends to build a residential property on, a residential dwelling on the property. So, if sewer's being put in for residential property, and it's a sizable partial, parcel, is it really necessary for them to hook up to GVRD water or GVRD sewer? Can they, do they not have the space there to do a septic?
Your Worship, not knowing the size, but assuming it is larger than a typical single-family home, it is quite feasible to, to install a septic system. But having said that, this is part of the area that the township's own bylaws require extension of this municipal sewer system before development is able to proceed. So, again, this is a referral to the GVS NDD board for them to align their, their various policies and tools and documents such that they're all in harmony in terms of the requirements and the boundaries for the catchment.
But the long term for this area is industrial, correct? Or am I misinterpreting?
That's correct.
Well, wouldn't you want to make sure if we are going to extend it, they're putting industrial pipes in?
That will have to be something that will have to be taken care of at a future date because of the fact that the timing of when the industrial development on site is unknown. That's something that will have to be ultimately determined and appropriate size pipes put in at a future date, if in fact, the pipe that is put in at, at this stage is deemed to be inadequate.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, just to Counselor Davis, sitting on the GVS NDD board, we've done many of these. Actually, the last ones we've done are 200th and about 8th Avenue. I think we've done three down there right now. These come across quite commonly across Metro Vancouver. And the more properties we can get on sewer, the less we affect the aquifer. So, generally, the context of discussions is around getting more, not fewer, onto sewer.
Okay, thank you. All right, seen no further discussion. I'll call a question on F2. That carries unanimously. And we move on to correspondence, which there's one item there.
I'll move that.
There's a, to receive and then also to approve.
Receive and approve.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fox moves it, second by Counselor Davis. Discussion on G1, seen none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. And move on to minutes of committees. There are three. There's the Heritage Advisory Committee, and the Heritage Advisory Committee recommended motion. Okay, we'll do the H1 first, we'll do one at a time. So, H1, moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Qualley. Any discussion on that? Seen none, call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. Move on to H2, and that's Heritage Advisory Committee recommended motion to draft the, to endorse the draft Heritage Advisory Committee work plan for 2018. Counselor Qualley moves it second, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Fox, wish to speak to?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, you're on. I think you're on. Okay, let me just push, there you go.
Okay. I'm looking in this, I'm not sure who the co-chair is that is responsible, but somewhere in the work plan was something to do with heritage areas. Shoot, I should have marked it and I didn't. Where the, help me with this, either one of you. To do with the heritage precinct, I talked to, actually, help me, Mr. Seffy, because you and I talked about it and I forgot to circle it and I apologize.
Your Worship, perhaps Counselor Fox is referring to page 10, hard copy, the item number five?
Five. Oh, expiration of protection instruments that address the long-term maintenance and viability of heritage assets. That's heritage sites within the heritage conservation area. Could you explain that, please, in a little more depth than simply in terms of the context in which it's written on a piece of paper?
Okay, who would explain that? Mr. Seffy or a member of the committee?
Staff.
Or staff?
We'll defer to staff.
Yeah, staff, or once in time. On the concern that Counselor Fox has regarding item number five on the work plan, just some more elaboration on that.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. There are various tools that are available. If council wishes to invoke those tools, I guess, or trigger those tools with respect to certain standards that, that must be met in terms of heritage values and heritage benefits in an area, heritage-related buildings, heritage sites. So, this is a work item for the committee to consider and bring forward recommendations to council to consider adopting such bylaws or policies that would then enable council to enforce certain requirements and certain standards related to heritage sites.
So, I, I, okay, so, is that standards prior to building, post-building, ongoing maintenance thereof, in, in the context? I, I'm not sure.
The latter.
The latter? So, ongoing maintenance and/or preservation of?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
If, I don't know if any member of the committee, co-chair, has any more to add to that, but thank you.
Sure, yeah, I've got, yep, sure. Counselarineson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seffy. I understand this to be simplistically an opportunity for us to review, as Mr. Seffy mentioned, a toolkit so that we could look at opportunities to maintain buildings that have heritage status, well, and even prior to status, because probab, you know, large problem comes into play when we have buildings, and very few of them actually have status per se. Some of them have been pre-identified as potential heritage buildings, but there's a continuum in which, if we don't have anything in our toolkit, it allows properties to slowly decline and deteriorate until we get to the point where there is what we call an "as-is" report. So, basically, when there's nothing left, if we haven't had an opportunity to intervene in that process, that's what can happen. So, we want to look to this as a way to consult and cooperate with, with landowners. It wouldn't, you know, to me, it's not something that we, we do unilaterally. We're working on a process that would be agreeable so that we could help to maintain more of our heritage buildings and sites.
Okay, thank you.
If that helps.
Yep, thank you. Counselor Long?
Yeah, and if you look at the minutes on page three, under the Heritage Planner's report, you'll see a report about a good example of this, the First Smith Residence, which unfortunately now, we have to, you know, ask the owners to clear the site because it's just an absolutely horrendous condition. Over the, over time, everything's fallen apart. So, this is, this is certainly an example of where if we had, not necessarily intervened, but if there were tools available to the owners prior to this time, maybe some of the Smith House could be saved. But currently, that 1980, or 1885 residence is unfortunately going to probably get bulldozed because it's very unsafe and dilapidated. So, there's an example where this maybe can apply.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fox?
Okay, just for clarification, this is for heritage sites, not any site in a heritage precinct then? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seen none, I'll call a question on H2. That carries unanimously. Move to H3, and that is Heritage Advisory Committee. Counselor Long moves it. Is there a seconder? Counselor Arneson, discussion on H3, seen none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. And other business, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I've got three items here. The first one pertains to our public hearing this evening, and I know that part of the public hearing concerns an adjournment of the manufactured home park discussion from Brookswood. And this, of course, is of great interest to the seniors that live in the park, and I'm sure several of them are planning on attending. But I am somewhat concerned that the agenda places their item at the very end. And so, on the basis that their item is a continuation of a previous meeting, as well as the fact that it is going to involve a number of seniors who may wish to speak tonight, and we do have a lengthy regular meeting ahead of us, in order to keep it at a reasonable timeline, I'd like to request, and I will be requesting when we get to approval of the agenda, that we vary the order of the public hearing agenda to bring item C4 up to the front, out of respect for those seniors.
Thank you. We can consider it then? Thank you.
Okay.
And the other system, number one?
Okay, number two. There was a memorandum sent to council in our items distributed last week, which is February the 15th, it's item number 11, and it concerns the TransLink Major Road Network review, which basically tells us that TransLink has initiated a review, and staff have reviewed the requests, consulted with neighboring municipalities, and submitted the following list and attached map of candidate MRN additions in priority order for the consideration of TransLink. Number two on this list is 216th Street from 88th Avenue to Highway 10. So, I, I don't believe that we should be including 216th Street from 88th Avenue to the new 216th Street interchange. I also think we should be taking 216th Street from 88th to 96th out of the truck route. So, I'm putting on a notice of motion for the next meeting, whereas a memorandum was sent to mayor and council from the Engineering Division on February 15th, 2008, file number 04400-67-001, concerning the TransLink Major Road Network review, whereas this memorandum identifies the addition of 216th Street from 88th Avenue to Highway 10 as the number two priority on the list, whereas residents of Walnut Grove has long expressed their concern about 216th Street north of the new interchange to 88th Avenue and 96th Avenue being a truck route on the basis of public health and child safety due to the close proximity of elementary schools and daycares. Therefore, be it resolved that council change the number two priority in this report to read from 216th Street, the new 216th Street interchange south to Highway 10, be it further resolved that 216th Street north of the interchange, 296th Avenue, not be designated a truck route in the TransLink Major Road Network. So, I'm putting that forward for the next meeting. Thank you.
Provide a copy to the court.
And that was number two. And then, number three, the, there were some members of council who were able to attend a public meeting in Aldagrove on Friday night, and this was the, the first meeting of the new Aldagrove Community Association. The newspaper was there and covered it, and in the newspaper, a statement made by one of the counselors present refers to a, an OCP review for areas outside the core area would be started in the coming year. And we have had a follow-up email from the association with regards.
Hey, just, excuse me.
And I didn't say in the coming year, I said in the future.
Okay, thank you. For clarification. And the media printed.
The media has in the coming year. So, I'm concerned about the wrong information having been given to this community association. They are responding now, asking that they be part of this planning process. So, my question was through you to staff, when is this review going to be done? Is it going to be done in the coming year?
So, Mr. Seffy, on the Aldagrove official community plan work that's being done, or contemplated to be being done, can you just give us a brief timeline on, on that process? And I, and I know that the community will be involved because that is the way we do official community plans. Mr. Seffy, is there anything in Aldagrove?
Thank you, Your Worship. The, the work is currently on hold pending outcome of discussions with the Agricultural Land Commission.
Okay.
We expect that to, I guess, not take, I don't know how long it would take, Your Worship. It, it could be, it could be a year or longer before we are actually back to undertaking technical analyses and discussing anything with the public.
And this has been going on for some time. Council, and I don't recall even when it was, but council had made authorized staff to conduct an OCP update in, in the Aldagrove, and that's some time ago, and that work's been kind of ongoing, but like you say, now it's on hold pending ALC. Okay, thank you. Hope that helps.
Okay, so, can we have staff respond to the community association saying that there is nothing planned in the imminent future on this?
Have they sent us something that, if you could forward the email to staff?
Well, I got.
Okay, so maybe forward, sure, forward it to Mr. Seffy, and I think Mr. Seffy happy, or to, and Counselor Fox, be happy to respond to them.
Well, Counselor Long was included in it, so was I. I think we should.
But normally, we'd let staff respond if it's a question, a technical question, a question on our planning, and we have authorized staff, so I think everybody can respond, there's no problem, but I think it would be helpful of staff to respond with, you know, the information from, that would be as accurate as possible. Any other thing else, Counsel Richter?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. On other business, just regarding the, the major road network, Mr. Seffy, a request for major road network status, just for my information, because I was reading through that also, and in my, not every major road network is a truck route, so I don't know if the two are linked. It's, it's certainly, it's a part of a process, but it doesn't mean that we're asking for truck routes, we're asking for major road network status, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. This is purely a revenue issue for the township?
Yeah.
And as you said, they're, they're not related.
Okay, thank you. And I just hope for that, that's helpful clarification. Any other business?
Terminating, no, no, no.
Oh, Counselor Long?
Your Worship, I'm just a bit concerned here about the notion of varying the agenda, but I understand the explanation, but what is the policy? Because the agenda has been published, it can, it could work both ways, right? If we, if we vary the agenda and take something from the end and put it at the beginning, folks might show up in the middle. So, I just wanted, you know, if there's a, a policy that we should adhere to in that respect, and perhaps we would move it to the middle, but I mean, then everybody gets treated differently because the agenda's already been published, right?
Ms. Bauer, can you help us on that?
To vary the agenda would require a two-thirds majority vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, Counselor Davis moves termination, seconded by, let's have a seconder, Counselor Long, all those favor, opposed, carried, thank you.